Are we ready?
Yeah.
Calling the meeting to order. I'll rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Here is I, in the United States of America. Here's the Republic of the United States. One nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and just.
In accordance with Governor Newsom's executive order N 2920, remote public participation is allowed in the following ways. Planning Commission meetings are available to be viewed on YouTube at HTTPS colon slash slash WWW. Town Paradise Tube.
That's all you have to read as far as the...
Just look for the channel. Public comment may be submitted by telephone during the meeting. Prior to the close of public comment on an item by calling 530-872-5951 at the time indicated by the chair. Alternately, you may send an email with the subject line. Planning Commission meeting?
Yeah, it's...
Oh, that would have been before.
Yeah, that's past that.
Okay, we'll disregard that. The roll call?
Roll call, Commissioner Gerard.
Here.
Commissioner LaSalle.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner, or Vice Chair Costa.
Here.
And Chair Morris is absent.
Okay, approval of the minutes is 1A for the... Anyone have any comments or changes? Is there a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the minutes as written.
I'll second.
Motion by LaSalle, seconded by Gerard. Roll call vote, Commissioner Gerard.
Aye.
Commissioner LaSalle.
Aye.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Aye.
Chair Morris is absent, and Vice Chair Costa.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, communications, recent council actions.
Oh, oh, well, that's much better. Okay, council adopted the resolution for the general plan amendment for the school district that the commission had provided a recommendation for, and adopt, or introduce the ordinance for the rezone. So they'll vote on the rezone next month. They also internally appointed Councilmember Crowder as the mayor for 2021, and Councilmember Jones as the vice mayor for 2021. They also chose to move forward with the sewer projects EIR, or the option to connect to Chico's wastewater treatment plant, right? We only have funding for one study, so that's the option that we're moving forward with, and they'll be working on forming a committee between Chico's council, some members of our council, state water board members, as well as staff, to work that out.
Will any of that come to this commission on the sewer?
No, sir, I don't...
None of that goes to them? Okay.
They also approved the job recruitment for our administrative services director, so you may see that up on our website also, our finance director essentially. Also approved the amendments as requested to the urgency ordinance regarding hazard trees to allow lay down yards for the contractors, just like we did for debris. They also thankfully adopted the salary schedule and job descriptions for new supervising code enforcement officers, so we'll start that recruitment in January, as well as putting into our budget the admin position also. And those are all the updates I have. Thank you.
Staff comments? Can I just go to a public hearing?
Um, yeah, I did not receive any public communication from anyone via email or phone, so yes.
Great, okay, public hearing. Item 5A, Blanton Site Plan Review Permit Application, PL 20-00275.
Another piece of paper.
So this parcel is a zone community commercial. It is a .13 acre parcel. You can see it's in a large commercial district. It was previously a hair salon. It has improved with an existing 882 square foot building and a storage shed just off to the south there. The business will be operated by the applicant and a part-time employee with proposed hours of 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The project, because it's involving an existing commercial space with little to no alterations, actually falls under SEQA Section 15301, Class 1, and is exempt from SEQA. Reviewing agencies have given favorable reviews, and therefore staff recommends approval of the site plan review permit.
Like to open the hearing to the public? Unless there's, does he maybe have questions for Chris? Okay. Would the applicant like to come to the podium and give us a little?
Good evening.
Tell us about your project. Yeah.
Okay, what'd you say?
Tell us what you're, what you're working on.
Uh, what we're working on is putting, just making it a car lot there, so. That first car lot back in town, so. You know, it's gonna be, right now I have a lot of, it's gonna be, I don't know, it's gonna be, uh, you know, I'm looking at a couple of different options. If I'm gonna do just, just two trucks, or do trucks and cars, or if I'm gonna do classics, or all three, so. I have a lot of classic trucks too, so. They're upper end too, so.
So where in this picture that we're looking at, where they sit on the...
Right, you, I can literally put like probably 12 cars on that pad from the fence back.
Okay.
You know, and then I have parking up front. I have parking on both sides along that side of the building. I can do, I can do one parking, and for somebody coming in, I can do two more places to park alongside, and then we have like three in front of that shed too, for handicap access and stuff into the building, so.
Yeah, that's a requirement to have for ADA, for you to have handicap spots designated.
Yeah, it does.
So how many total cars are you, have an idea on that particular lot?
Like 12 to 15.
12 to 15?
Yeah.
Okay.
Leasing the bill, leasing all the property next door too, which is much larger than this, you know, so I can park, reserve cars over there if I need to, so.
Well, this approval is not for that lot. Okay, this approval is only for the one you submitted, 6627. It's not for you to park or whatever on 6625. That's a different lot, that'll be a different process and all that, so.
Okay, yeah, no worries.
What you're asking for is able to use that as a used car lot.
Yes.
My concern, I, you know, have thought through it, is I don't want to see what's happening on Skyway, one of the repair facilities right there on Elliott and Skyway, where there's cars parked there and parked next door, parked on the street, parked on the side and all that. I would not like to see that on this particular road, and you've got plenty of room to do your vehicles and all that, so.
Yes, yes.
So is that what you're thinking about? Is it to have them back there nicely, you know?
Oh, yes, 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 for sure, for sure, yes.
And for 6625, are you planning on coming back to the commission for using that for something?
Not at this time. We gotta, we gotta let, we gotta let the business grow a little bit. I mean, I shoot for the moon. I want that car lot, I want another car lot, you know what I mean?
And we like that, we like that, we want to see that.
Yeah, I mean, when I do something, I'm committed 100%, so. I will make that work, so.
When do you think you'll start the business?
Uh, I'm thinking just the first of the year, so. You know, I'm thinking like January 1st I'll open, so.
Now, will that be the total business this location will have? Is the building currently?
Oh, no, that building is gonna be nothing but a car lot. My construction site's next door at another, you know, adjacent lot, so.
Yeah.
So the building will just office essentially?
Yes, yes, yep.
Any repair work or maintenance or detailing or any of that kind of?
Not, not that I know of at this time, you know what I mean? So, you know, so I have, I have other places I can do that stuff.
Okay.
With mechanics. We're in the beginning of starting that business, so.
What's it gonna be called?
Uh, it's integrity, what is it?
I think it's integrity. Or it's not integrity?
There's a sign up there.
Paradise Motors.
Yeah.
Sorry, it's a long day. A long week.
We appreciate that.
And then, will you have signage thrown?
There is a sign right, I...
That's what I was just looking at.
Yeah, there's the sign right here. We just put this because we moved next door. There's the sign right there.
Yeah.
DMV have those requirements. We had to meet all DMV's requirements too, so those are all met already, so.
Oh, good.
They've already issued their temporary, I have a temporary license already for DMV.
Okay.
These are the process.
Good deal.
Any other questions?
Are those two trees next to the slab there, are those alive, or are they?
You know what, they're alive. They're alive.
Okay.
So, it, yeah, I've been watching them still, 'cause I hate to down if I don't have to, but.
Yeah, I hate for them to...
I do too, I do too, you know what I mean?
With the winds we've had and all that, so, you know, an arborist might be in order. That's your call, but that'd be an expensive mistake if one of them dropped on one of your, you know...
It is, but that's one of our heaviest foliage areas probably in town. I think every, every pine is still there and everything, you know, so.
Excellent, excellent.
Yeah, so.
One of the lucky ones.
Yeah. Yeah, bypass that area, okay.
And I'll, and I'll make it look sharp for the community, you know what I mean? So I, I'm gonna make sure I succeed.
Yeah, you're right on a mean road, and people will see that. That's, that's an important thing to do, is the quality look from the street.
Yep, yep, it'll stay classy, it'll stay dressed up, you know, so I'll make sure of that. So I got a lot invested already, so.
Good, okay.
Anything else?
No questions.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you guys.
Is there any cards on emails? No phone, no phone calls?
It's your choice, we're gonna vote on it now. You might, you might want to see the result.
Would you like to close the public hearing?
Close the public hearing? I don't need to do that, right? Okay, commission discussion?
The total number of vehicles, I just, I didn't want it to end, but beyond that, everything else looks good to me, I mean.
Agreed, sir.
Yeah.
I'll motion to approve.
Approve is written? I'll second it.
Okay.
Motion by Reynolds, seconded by LaSalle. Roll call vote, Commissioner Gerard.
Aye.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Aye.
Chair Morris is absent.
Aye.
You're good.
All right.
Go get some cars on your way. Make us proud, get some cars on that lot, get them sold.
Okay, on to 5B, and I'm not sure how to pronounce this. Pardon me? Yes. Help me. Okay, conditional use permit application, PL 20-00285.
Yes, ARPOD for Garcia. Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
So, ARPOD for Garcia is requesting approval of a conditional use permit to expand and non-conforming use. The previous residence was legally non-conforming. It was built in 1944, and obviously long before the town was incorporated. It was a 900 square foot home, had five accessory structures. Picture here. And the total assessed value, according to the county's assessor's office, was 1,532 square feet. And it, there's a, we're a little unclear. It looks like it's a 1.06 acre lot, but there is a map showing that it might be, what was it, .76, Vice Chair? And so, um... A lot of adjustments?
Okay.
0.6. So the new resi... So the new residence that's proposed is 1,811 square feet, which is what prompts the CPU. It will be a three-bedroom, two-bath, with an upgraded septic to match. The neighborhood is largely commercial. This is obviously at the northern end of Skyway, and those three lots are kind of an island of commercial lots, surrounded by residential. In fact, if I kind of lump these all together, oop.
I've lost it. Hit back, yeah.
You can see how much falls into residential, leaving the store, convenient storage, just to the south.
And this property's in that red area?
That's correct. And all three of the bad homes prior to the fire, or currently have homes on them, so. Yeah. So, um... This falls under SEQA Section 15302, Class 2, as it's a rebuild of an existing structure and categorically exempt. Staff, uh, sorry, the reviewing agencies have given favorable reviews for the project, and so staff does recommend approval of this project.
Now, is this lot the corner lot there, or is it underneath that "I" that you're showing?
Underneath the "I."
Yeah, there's a fence along the front side, I know that. But, so it only has access on Skyway, doesn't have access on that side street, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
So the two lots just north of that, that's commercial?
That's correct.
And is there anything on there now? That's what I...
In the center lot, there is a home.
Okay.
And I think there, there used to be some kind of a glass business there, but I think that part actually burned, so.
What would it take to rezone that?
Well, ARPOD, we're gonna call you up in just a moment, and then you can discuss that. Sorry, though, yeah, I guess it looks like it was the next one up that was the last shop.
I think Lynn had the question, what would it take to make that residential rather than commercial, or is that something that should be considered?
You know, I don't know that it's necessary. If they already have residential use, and they're kind of grandfathered into that, then, then it wouldn't, you know, wouldn't change the homogeneity of the neighborhood. You could potentially rezone, and, you know, that's a a process like any of these others, where they put an application, and they, you know, the homeowner would want to have to, would want to do that. They would have to want to do that. But there wouldn't necessarily be a motivation to do that if they already have their home there.
Thank you.
I'd like just to note for the record that Chair Morris arrived at 6:20 p.m.
Doctor P.
Would you like your gavel, Chair Morris? Yeah, make him go, okay. Okay. Questions for Chris?
Thanks, Chris.
Run 5B. Open the public hearing. And the applicant is welcome to come to the podium to talk about your project.
Hi.
Hi.
Tell us about your project, what do you want to do?
Oh, rebuild my home.
Rebuild your home.
Yes. That was my primary resident before the fire, so. Now I, I rebuild two homes in Paradise. One where I live, my son, to be the, him have kind of finance, you know? So the other house I built on the Skyway, 8693 Skyway, that's my daughter's house. So we're still working. So this will be the third project I have. Each one will be my house. And my dogs.
When do you plan on starting building on that lot?
Oh, I already started. I asked, I paid for the permit for extend my septic system, and I got the plans. All I need, whatever I was trying to put the plan in, so when I got there, they went a minute, you was have commercial and so come out the, they need a use permit. I was ready everything, you know, PID, everything I paid. I have PG&E temporary power already in the property. I have my RV there, and also I have a garage, 3x40 garage, built, or not garage, it's like a carport, built in 2017, survived the fire.
That's that metal structure on the north side of your lot?
Yes.
Okay, that's a workshop or a garage, or?
Well, was a carport for my RV. And boat, when the fire, my boat was there, and trailer I was having.
So then this would be purely residential for you?
Excuse me?
No business, just residential?
Fire, I was planning to do heating and air, and, you know, I, I lost a lot of money. I was have two rentals before the fire, I have five properties in Paradise, so. Already rebuilt two, the, um, two property, 2017, I buy it right before the fire, was no insurance. So, well, I burned down, like everybody.
Yeah, like everybody. Build a, a single-family residence, so you mentioned commercial on the lot. Are you planning on having trucks and, and equipment on the lot in addition to being living on the lot, or is that going someplace else?
No, no, because I am 62.
So keep going.
No. Right before the fire, I was go get my sea laces for heating and air, so. I just gave up now.
Oh, you gave up now, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So I planning to rebuild forever, and...
Okay. You know the reason why you're here, right? It's because you want a bigger house than what was on there. It's, it's commercial, you want to put residence, but the town just wanted to make sure that anybody that went bigger than their original house before the fire came here to make sure, because some places in the middle of town, they prefer it to be commercial, but in your case, you're on the north end of town, but you still had to go through this request process, and I know it's slowing you down a little bit. Just want to explain why you're here, is because of the...
Yeah, 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 we changed, I understand, I...
Yeah, but you're still planning on making it residence, and there's houses around you and all that, right?
Sure. That's my plan.
Good, okay.
Any further questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any cards, phone calls?
There were no emails received or phone calls for this agenda item.
Um, I'll close the public hearing. And commission discussion?
I'm good.
Me neither, okay, motion?
Motion by Gerard, seconded by Morris. Roll call vote, Vice Chair.
Aye.
Commissioner Gerard?
Aye.
Commissioner LaSalle?
Aye.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Aye.
And Chair Morris?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
You're approved.
Thank you. All right, uh, are there any other business?
I'm gonna do my standard that this application, there is a seven-day appeal period on it, so that means for you, ARPOD, that you couldn't actually pull any building or septic permits until that seven-day appeal period's over.
Ready to go.
Yep. Yeah. Yeah, there you go. Been a tough year.
Okay, committee activities, now I'm taking it, okay. Commission, uh, commission members?
Oh, the identification of future agenda. So as of today, I'm not aware of any discretionary entitlements that are slated for January's hearing. So, we don't have, nope, we don't, okay. So even if somebody applied, you know, this week or even next week, I don't know that it's physically possible to have the project reviewed in enough context, be able to notice it to the paper when we're required. So my guess is, for now, we'll probably end up asking for January's meeting to be canceled and reconvene in February. We've certainly had discussions with potential businesses in need of discretionary entitlements. We're just not there yet, and I can totally understand with the holidays. So we might see some more action coming up in January. But I did want to let the commissioners know, this isn't immediate, but we are releasing our RFP housing element on Friday on our website, and it'll give 30 days for consultants to send in their bid proposals for that, with the hope that we can identify a contract firm to do that housing element and have it ratified by the council at the February meeting, and get started during calendar 21 for the housing element. That is something that eventually makes its way to the planning commission.
When you say housing element, I guess...
Oh, yes, that is one of the elements, or one of the chapters of the general plan. So it's the only one that requires... We're on an eight-year cycle. So ours expires in summer of 2022, so this will get us to a point to get to the state submittal level by early 2022. And then next year, we're very hopeful, go ahead and push out the RFP for the whole general plan update for the rest of the elements. To get started, and that's like a three-to-four-year project.
Big project.
One other question, but good.
Yes, sir.
The prior item was committee activities, and since I've been here, I've not been assigned to any committees, and I've not heard anybody else being assigned. Are there committees that we're supposed to be attending to?
I don't think that any of the committees right now are active.
Okay, so there's nothing for us to worry about committee-wise, that we should be attending?
No.
Or future attendings, or something like that?
Not yet.
Okay, fair enough.
They're just still rebuilding.
Don't want to be late.
Oh goodness, I believe, there used to be one, oh, there was a landscape appeals committee? There were a lot of appeals kind of boards, because we do landscape at administrative level. Same with, there used to be one about trees. Oh.
Oh, okay.
Okay. You think it's just landscape appeals at this point? Which I can't, in my timeframe, I can't remember the last time one was a field.
Okay. All right.
And then I don't know if you guys have seen any construction out or had any questions about any particular projects?
I just want about what, about the website?
Oh, for the town.
Is that just like an online version of what they would, in person? How is that structured? Calling you guys, asking for help, running?
So right now, what we, well, what we've done recently is the assistant to the town manager, who's really our business advocate, and myself, we've been meeting one-on-one or virtually with prospective new business owners, because it is a pretty daunting task, all of the different divisions, all of the different applications that are required, so that, you know, the idea being meet with us. I have a very good understanding of all the permitting processes to go through, and this wealth of knowledge about programs or funding that's out there to help get them off the ground. So we've been doing that, but trying to also build it into our website as such also. But I felt that it's been really beneficial so far to the folks that we've been working with.
And then, for instance?
Mm-hmm.
Restaurant. Art. Oh, sorry, uh, there was a restaurant mentioned, is that something?
It would not, so this, I think that's a, a little bit of an overstatement, it would fall more in the bakery. The definition.
Bakery, yeah.
Donuts, and donuts.
Somebody say donut shop?
So, anything that is restaurant or food sales, which covers bakeries and like delicatessens, as long as they're in a community commercial zone, it's a permitted use.
Okay.
So all we would look at is if they put new signage, did a new facade, but otherwise, it's mainly just building fire and septic.
Got it.
Gotcha.
Excellent.
The short answer, no, we won't see it.
Anything else?
Oh, dear. Is that me?
All right, it looks like we're wrapping up. Anything else other?